Well, I think everybody's aboard at three o'clock, so I'll call a workshop session to order. This is our typical council work session before the regularly scheduled council meeting. It should be a short one today. We only got a couple of items to discuss. We have a schedule for an hour. And I don't anticipate we'll be taking any public input at the workshop or will be making any decisions. So, and I believe Nancy Jones, our newest assistant city recorder is facilitating our virtual Zoom meeting this afternoon and will be this evening too. So be gentle on her. This was her first time working this, working the magic here. With that, let's move right into the first item. Leila, do you want to give us the update on the short-term rental committee recommendations?
I do. Thanks, Mayor. And thanks also for acknowledging Nancy. She is flying solo tonight, but Nita has graciously joined, at least to help shadow, just in case any technical issues come up. But I told Nancy if they do not to worry that we're all patient. But we're super excited to have Nancy on board and she's been taking on bit by bit more sort of the administrative elements of running the council meetings. So I am becoming more and more grateful for that as she moves along in her work. So welcome, Nancy. Thank, so I wanted to take this chance to sort of run through the recommendations. So tonight at the regular session meeting, we'll be asking you to adopt a resolution, but I thought we could use this time in case there are any questions to address the short-term rental committee. So I'm excited because my hope is that we will have a fully formed committee after this and we can get to work. So I put together a staff report. This is familiar to some of you, but I do want to sort of highlight for you and for the public. One of the things I'm trying to do with these staff reports is hearken back to previous discussions about this. So for folks that might be watching, the staff reports have hyperlinks that will take you to the packets for each of these meetings. And then if you want to watch those meetings, at least you know exactly which meetings to look to. So I hope this is useful, especially for folks that are new. And then I expect we'll have a few newer folks joining us in January as well. So this is just building off a series of steps that we have taken. We initially formed the short-term rental committee back in February. Council asked us to add additional ad hoc members. We made some changes to how we conduct selections for commissions and committees. And council adopted that. And one of those steps was to get approval on a set of criteria, which was approved at our last council meeting. Counselors Spengman and I led this process and then we, working with the short-term rental committee that was established. Sorry, back in June, that's when we appointed the committee. In February, we established the committee. And we selected, the committee selected Deb Chipola to serve on the selection committee. So the three of us met after our last council meeting and I reached out to all of the remaining folks that were on that list and a handful of them informed me that they weren't interested for a various host of reasons. But that left us with, I believe, eight candidates. And so the three of us evaluated those applications based on the criteria that was approved last month and selected three candidates to interview. And we held those interviews just a couple of weeks ago. And we had a really tough choice. We had three really excellent folks that presented themselves. And so we interviewed Anna Pong, Narayan, Cheryl Ogburn, and Patrick Johnson. And at the commencement or conclusion, sorry, of these interviews, Deb Chipola actually let us know that she was resigning from the committee because she is moving. So based on that, Counselor Spengman and I determined we had three super solid candidates that we had interviewed had gone through the full process. And one of those candidates, Cheryl Ogburn, actually met the criteria for the position that Deb Chipola held. So based on that, we are recommending that the council adopt a resolution later this evening to approve Cheryl Ogburn to fill the position of a person who does not own an STR, but lives on a street that has a low density of short-term rentals, which she does. And to appoint Patrick Johnson and Anna Pong Narayan as the ad hoc members. Counselor Spengman, do you want to add anything to what I've said?
You've covered it thoroughly. The only thing I would underscore is that if we needed to make a choice among the three interviews, it would have been very challenging. It was a very good group that came in and interviewed and we appreciated that opportunity and but for Deb's resignation, we would have had to make a very difficult choice.
It gives credence to the argument to add two additional members because we had such a strong candidate pool. And I would also just note too, for the record, that I have either emailed or personally reached out to the remaining candidates to let them know the status of the process. So I'd be happy to take any questions. My hope was we could have any discussion here so that as we get to the regular session tonight, we can move through that fairly quickly.
Any questions, everybody?
No, the selection looked excellent. I mean, you, you had three really strong candidates and I'm delighted that they're on the committee.
I know everybody's anxious to get this thing going, so.
I too, we just add my appreciation to first the selection committee. I think this process is a step up from maybe some of the processes we've used in the past. And for that, I'm very appreciative. I also know two of the candidates that you selected, Anna Pong and Patrick, both who I have the highest regard for. And I know Patrick was very active as a citizen volunteer, if you will, on our original short-term rental work group. And along with many others from the community that helped us with that process. But Patrick in particular should be singled out as someone who really helped the process and provided a great deal of input. I'm excited for this group to begin their processing, begin their work. And I would be remiss if I didn't make one last mention of my hope that they look fairly quickly at the remaining short-term strategies that were outlined in the original report. You know, they may choose not to do, some of them, or maybe they'll choose not to do any of them, but I think they're worthwhile initiatives for consideration. So thank you again to the committee and congratulations to the selected work group.
So this will be on the agenda tonight, so we should be able to vote on this and smoothly pass this through. I think we're all anxious, communities anxious to get this committee established and get them working on some issues.
Might need a, excuse me, Gina, Jenna, what's wrong? Jenna had a question.
Once this does get approved, do we have a start date of when the meetings will be or is that going to be established later?
Once we're through this process, we'll set up an initial meeting and then my hope is we'll establish an ongoing monthly meeting that's at a regular time. We had done that previously. My hope is we can maintain that. I think we had selected a Friday, third Friday of the month or something. So we'll just need to check in with the new folks that are at it. But the hope is we'll have a standing meeting time. So members of the community who want to tune in are able to plan for that.
Hey, we got anything else on this topic? Around this one. So let's go ahead and move on to the next item then. Going to talk about short-term rental inspection and renewal fees. Is Scott going to give his presentation on that?
He is, and I'll just provide color commentary throughout probably, but I just want to take a quick moment to acknowledge both Scott and Judy Wilson, who we met with you all about a year ago about this and established new and increased some fees. And these two, as usual, have done an outstanding job, both implementing the new requirements of our ordinance 1003, which governs what happens with short-term rentals. They meticulously collect data and spent some good time analyzing that. And I wanted Scott to have a chance at this work session to review that with all of you, get any feedback you might have or suggestions. And then the hope would be that we could move forward with any fee recommendations at the next city council regular meeting, or if there's additional information that y'all need from us, we could put that together and come back to you next month at a work session. So that's Scott. I'll hand it over to you.
Okay, thanks, Leila. You know, I'd also like to really thank Judy for putting together some of these numbers and working with me on this. It took a little bit of time and I think Steve, you will probably be happy with some of our numbers that we actually we're looking at cost recovery when we came up with this. So at any time during this, go ahead and stop me if you have a question. I don't mind answering them then. Judy's also on here to be able to answer some questions. So let me see if I can share my screen. And I only have a few slides. So I'll make this as painless as I can. Can everybody see that?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay. Perfect. Let me move that out of the way. Okay. All right. So short-term rental inspection and license fee applications. That's the fun stuff we're going to talk about this time. So currently the fees that we have established do not, not sufficient enough to cover the cost of the enforcement and administration of ordinance 10-3. They were increased like Leila said last summer, and that was prior to the ordinance going into effect. So we really didn't know what, how much staff time was going to be involved to implement and enforce the new ordinance. So currently, you know, like I said, the fees don't, don't cover it. Last fiscal year, the cost recovery was about 57%. And, and ultimately our goal is close to 100% cost recovery as we can. And that's a typo right there.
Hey, Scott, I don't know how much it matters, but we're looking at the presenter's screen. So we see both the screen and then the next screen. So I don't know if you can switch it. So we just see the, the full screen. Do you feel me?
Yeah, I got you.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm gonna have to back out of this because I, actually, let me do this. See if this works.
It'd just be easier for folks to see. Thank you.
Does that work?
Nope. Almost, hang on, it might.
Let me click something here.
Swap, yeah.
That's not letting me. Let me just start the slideshow over.
Okay.
I had it up on another screen at the same time.
Yeah, I've had that happen too. Thank you.
There you go.
There you go. Thank you.
Probably see that.
That is better.
Let me get rid of that. Okay, thank you. Uh, screen two. So I asked myself, why are we only recovering 57% of the cost? You know, what has changed? Well, what's changed is our administration time. It now takes longer to administer that, you know, the new changes in the ordinance and to make sure everyone is compliant with, with it. Over the past year, it's been a learning curve for, for staff and the homeowners. You know, what's required? What are we looking at? So it's, it's increased our communication considerably with, with short-term rental owners. So, so with the new requirements, there is quite a bit more requirement with the, the homeowners to know what, what they're required when we go out on an inspection. And you know, we really put a burden on them to make sure that when they do tell us they're ready for an inspection, that they are ready for an inspection. So that I think that really covered, you know, increased quite a bit of communication with the community of here's our expectation. We're working on updating our requirements that are, that'll be mailed out hopefully the end of November with, with the new fees on it. With a little more explanation that, that will answer some of the questions we've had asked throughout the year. So with only 57% of the cost being recovered with the current fees, who covers the remaining 43%? And that's just a question that, you know, that I ask myself. And you might want to actually think about that one. So proposed fees are, you know, for staff, we're recommending, you know, an increase and I'll go over the numbers here in a minute. Yeah. And that'll help cover administration of and the enforcement of, of the new short-term rental ordinance. One note is we didn't account for the amount of time the city manager has to spend when we have a complaint or somebody doesn't agree with what we found. So we didn't account for, you know, the time spent that she has spent or the amount of time that Nina, our accounting manager, has to spend doing, you know, the, the monthly or the quarterly entries and audits of, of the revenue generated. So the proposed increase, the new applications will go up 111% periodic respec. So the new applications we're proposing to go from 250 to 400. Periodic re-inspections, 111% from 150 to 300. Follow-up inspections, 108% from $75 to 225. Random inspections, we're looking at about 107% increase from 150 to 250. And then the annual renewal, about 99% from 250 up to 400. Now, this is the minimum, it, you know, with our staff time involved, the process and inspect and issue or issue the renewals or new licenses. You know, this, this is a bare minimum that would take to, to cover that cost. Let's see, next slide. So what are, what are the other jurisdictions charging right now? Our, our current fees right now, as I said, are, you know, above the, the lowest four. But below, there's two others that are higher than us. What are the unknowns? You know, to compare these rates, you know, we don't know what, what is their administration inspection enforcement cost? You know, is there ordinance similar to ours or do they have a pretty light ordinance that there are not a lot of requirements? So we don't know if their fees are actually are cost recovery or just a fee they threw out there. But one thing that, that you might want to notice, our ordinance, I've had a phone call from Port Orford. I know Leila sat down with Rockaway and they've talked about our, our ordinance and, and how well it's written and some of the enforcement requirements that we're utilizing. And they're looking to actually duplicate what we've done. So you know, that's a, that's a kudos to the group that put that together to have other jurisdictions actually looking to look, do what we've done. So in conclusion, you know, what's a budget impact? What we're looking to do is provide additional revenue to cover the cost time and time management for the short-term rental program. Is, like I said, it's a minimum amount that we need to cover, recover costs, but doesn't take into effect account the time the city manager and accounting manager spend in short-term rentals. And then it also, what it, the, this number does not include is a contingency fee. So if for some reason short-term rentals, you know, the, the revenue generated is not enough to cover staff time, we, we need to build up or reserve fund in order to cover potential slower times. We're not proposing any additional workload, you know, to collect these fees. We already collect them. So recommendation is to have council reviews the fee, review the fees, provide us feedback on our proposal and maybe any recommendations that we can look at for different fees or adding something to it. And we'd like to come back next month with a resolution that would put the fees into effect. And the alternative is council can elect to maintain the existing fee structure at the current 50% cost recovery rate. And then we wouldn't have to come back to you next month. So with that, that is all I have. I'm not, I don't think Judy had anything she'd like to add to it. I don't know how to stop.
Man, the council, have any questions for Scott or Judy or Leila on this issue?
I, I'll, I could start it out with, hi Scott. And yes, I am very excited about the term cost recovery being included in, in the process, something that I think several of us have been hoping for for a while.
I've heard from you three different times now, cost recovery.
Only three times. I'm, you must not have been listening the other 120.
Well, for three different.
So I, I'm appreciative of the fact that you went to 100% cost recovery. And I hope in the future, the future councils sets, and I'm sure you probably will, but set standards for each of our program deliveries that what percentage of cost recovery that we're actually trying to achieve. But if there's a poster child for 100%, it would be short-term rentals. I had a couple of questions. What, is random inspection a complaint inspection or do you do actual random inspections?
Occasionally we have people that have had compliance issues in the past and we'll have to go out and do a random inspection. Generally, we try to get ahold of them the day of, you know, that we'd like to go out or as short a notice as we can, because there, there are certain things that we're looking for that if we're doing a random inspection for compliance, it's something they can easily remedy before we get there.
Okay. And I understand. So I guess my immediate reaction to that was that you do get complaint inspections, but I don't know that we have a process in what you shared there as far as charging for a complaint inspection, if in fact it turns out to be valid. I wouldn't charge for a complaint inspection if everything was found to be acceptable. But if we go out on a complaint inspection and we discover there are violations, to me, they should be charged at 100% cost recovery and potentially further fined if they're in fact are violations that fall within the ordinance, just something to think about.
I think I see what you're saying there, Steve. So that would fall under random inspection and with the 225 or $250 proposal. And we could probably put some wording in there that, you know, that covers what you're saying, that, that it, the base fee is 250 plus any additional staff time and costing accrued for enforcement.
The, the only thing I would suggest is you put yourself in an awkward position if you do a random inspection based upon your perception of previous violations and you go out there and discover nothing is wrong. The city has essentially, you know, pulled the trigger on an inspection that wasn't requested or required. And we charge them $250. So it, it, just something to think about in terms of how you might handle that. It doesn't seem on the fairness schedule, probably doesn't seem real good. Contingency, you mentioned contingency. The only thing I would say about that is that for this kind of a process and, and for what you're doing on short-term rentals, I'm, it's not like a building inspection or other types of construction inspections because you're always going to have the user paying the cost recovery and there's always going to be users as long as we have short-term rentals. In other words, you're not going to have the need to keep a building inspector employed in times when there's no building activity going on or reduced amount of building activity. But the amount of activity relative to short-term rentals is for the most part going to stay very consistent. So again, it's something to think about in terms of whether you really want to establish a contingency for that. And then the last thing I would mention is the cost, some sort of a, I'll call it cost of living, but some kind of an inflationary factor going forward, rather than just trying to come back and re-visualize this again every year or every five, five years or based upon our past practice every 20 years. So you know, if we build in something, whether in ordinance or in our cost recovery strategies that in fact have a built-in inflation factor for the fees, I would be, I, I think that would be an appropriate place to go. And thank you for listening to me.
All right. Thanks, Steve.
Yeah, I just would add, it's a great comment, Counselor Nuttall. One of the things that I'm working with both Dan and Scott on is creating a master fee schedule that we would actually look at annually as part of the budget process. And in that, we would want to add increases to fees based on inflation or other types of factors, so that we're doing it in more of an organized fashion and that we have a process in place that allows us to visit those fees more frequently than every two decades. So appreciate that comment and we'll take that into consideration.
I, I'm, I'm going to stress one more time because I think it's really critical and you may have already have it on your plate, but it, it, whether it's in the budget, probably in the budget committee, but as you move over at those budget committee meetings that every program delivery is identified and ultimately a council approval for a cost recovery target is implemented for every single program delivery. Some may be zero, some will be 100%, some might be 50% based upon the public benefit for that service delivery. But to me, that's the very first order of business is establishing your cost of, not only the cost of service, but the actual desired amount of cost recovery. So hopefully that will be in the near term. That will get you stabilized in terms of what you're actually going to try to budget for to recover the money. So thanks, thanks again.
Scott, I, I just wanted to ask about follow-up inspections. I, I recall at a short-term rental work group hearing that I, or meeting that I sat in on, there was some audience expression of concern about follow-up inspections in general. And I think, I, I think that as I recall correctly, I think the point was that you know, if somebody gets dinged on something and does the right thing and fixes it, seems weird to have to pay another fee to come out and have you, I guess that's what the follow-up is about. And I guess my, my real curiosity is about, is there a way to sort of price a follow-up inspection differently if you are essentially following up on one or two minor items as opposed to five or six major items?
Great question, Jerry. What, what we found, there are certain things we don't charge a follow-up on. If it's a building issue, life safety issue that needs to be addressed, that they don't get charged a follow-up because when I go out to do the building inspection, that's when it's corrected and signed off on. What we found was we had a lot of people that just ignored the list. Didn't, didn't follow the checkoff list. It was spelled out pretty good and wanted to argue with it. And we spent a lot of back and forth time between Judy, Chris and myself with the applicant or the short-term rental owner to explain to them how to, you know, what they needed to do. So that fee is based on staff time on average of what it took when there was a significant amount. We did give some leeway. If it's somewhere I can drive by and verify they've corrected their parking or, or you know, whatever minor correction there was, we didn't charge a fee for that. We, we tried to keep it if they had two or three items. We're going to charge. I mean, just the time, the back and forth, it was substantial.
Thanks.
So you mentioned that you didn't cover Leila or Nina's time. I didn't get a sense of what, how we were going to correct that or kind of what your strategy was in terms of looking at that.
I, I think what I can do, Linda, what I did with my time, Judy's time and Chris's time was we, we actually sat down, made a spreadsheet with our hourly rate, and this is how much time we're spending on this. And I can sit down, you know, talk to Leila and Nina. And when we come back next month, we can have those numbers of what that.
Oh, good, good.
We can, yeah, we can adjust those numbers. And that was something that really I thought about, I believe it was yesterday and just didn't have time to do. So.
No, but I'm glad you're addressing that. And that seems like a very appropriate way to do that. Thanks, Scott.
It does bring up another question for you, Scott. And on your cost recovery, your amounts of service is, are you, how do I phrase this? Were you, were you looking specifically at just salary structure and benefits for the people employed? Or did you consider other indirect charges, the typical indirect charge that we're applying right now for indirect charges?
So the, the way we calculated was based on our salary plus benefits. So that gave us our hourly rate and that's how we calculated. We didn't calculate, you know, you know, materials, you know, printer, ink, paper, mailings and, and those items. But we did cover, it was mainly based on staff time.
Well, that, that makes sense. I, I, maybe in the future, as you move along, something that Leila will deal with, but normally in a cost recovery like that, you, it's full cost recovery. So whatever the charges are, whatever the city spends to deliver that service, if it's in fact a hundred percent to be provided by, by the individual receiving the service, it's a hundred percent. So it's, you know, you're, you know, we're still doubling some of these fees, so a little bit baby steps, right? But if we're really going to do a hundred percent cost recovery, we need to consider the indirect as well, so.
We could, we could look at possibly a percentage for indirect. You know, five, ten percent that may cover the cost of mailings and, and all that.
Our budget process has a percentage for, for indirect that would, normally you would apply to whatever the service delivery is, so. Anyway, thanks.
Any other comments or questions from anybody?
Well, I'm just curious. I, I know our city has pretty good interaction with SCR owners and SCR rental agents, and I'm just curious if you've floated any trial balloons or, or hearing any feedback and any anticipated issues you might run into with this proposal?
Oh, a- anybody in the community from short-term rent, the owners that have said anything?
Yeah.
Since this is the first public meeting on this, this hasn't really been out there until today.
Okay, all right.
Well, we'll let you know when, if we.
Yeah, you, you and others will.
Yeah.
So, so we're just kind of floating this out there today, so in the next month, you'll probably hear some feedback. So the plan is, it sounds like to bring this to the city council in November for us to approve these increases, if that's what we decide to do. And so it sounds like you're going to tweak a couple of things a little bit, right, Scott?
Yeah, we'll, we'll tweak the numbers with Leila and Nina's time spent, and, and we'll adjust accordingly based on that.
Yeah, and, and of course, next month, when this is on the regular council agenda, we'll open it for public comment at that time, too. I'm sure we'll have some people on that. Any other questions or comments on this? So that, that's the plan, right, Leila? We're, we'll put this on the agenda for next month for approval?
Yeah, there's general consensus of support for the proposed, the recommendation. Then, like Scott said, we'll go back, make some modifications, we'll explain those at, we could hold at a work, another work session, but we could also do that in regular session and prepare a resolution for your approval.
Okay. So, so again, I, as I said, this is out there after today, so people will see it, and you'll get some feedback.
We can share what feedback we hear as well, so.
Okay.
Everyone has Scott's email. Just shoot him a note.
Change your email address tonight.
They send it all to, to Judy, and I'm trying to take stuff off her plate.
Well, this has been a pretty short work session. We scheduled it for, and it's been thirty-five minutes. Do we have anything else we need to discuss before tonight? Otherwise, we can adjourn, and we'll see everybody at six o'clock. Anything else, Leila, we need to talk about?
Not at this moment, no.
Okay, well, then we will adjourn, and I'll see everybody at six.
All right, thank you.